The United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated and welcome to our city council meeting, Orleansburg, Kansas on August 4th, 2025. We will now turn our attention to item number three, which is public input. And I do have an individual that has signed up to speak this evening in public input. Mr. Erickson, if you want to come on forward and introduce yourself and...
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
My name is Lauren Erickson. Some of you we've talked before. David Tanner, who we've all talked before. The reason I'm here tonight is I'm asking for some help from the city of Linsburg. Back in May, I, well, my stepdaughter owns a house at 535 South Main, down by the park. I bought it back in 2012 because it was next door to my wife's house and we needed more. There's always been a problem with the sewer. We have snaked it twice, three times a year since 2012. Well, it finally had gotten so bad this year that we couldn't get anything to go through. And so, we had Tom, TCB plumbing, come look at it. He snaked it, did the best he could do. He suggested having a camera go down it and see what the problem was. So, we hired a guy out of Exhustant to do that. And if anyone would like to see, here's the camera of the inside. And what we found out is the sewer was okay, clear out until it's in the middle of the street. And then there was a problem. He couldn't push the camera no further. We couldn't see anything. And that's what were the problems. Well, we got ahold of the city and they come out and we talked about it. And Tom and I, I literally had my own backhoe service. We wanted to fix it a certain way and see what the problem, because the cameraman actually painted the street out there where he thought the problem was. It was clear out almost in the west lane or the south lane going south. Well, the main is in the middle of the south lane. So, it was fairly close to the main where the problem was. Well, we talked with the city and they said, "No, we're not going to let you dig up the street." And I said, "Okay, well then what do I do to fix it?" A house is worthless without a sewer. Would anybody live in a house without a sewer? I mean, you've got to have something. And so, they suggested we hire a company to come in and bore in a new sewer. And so, he gave me a person or a company and a person, one in Salina, and said, "Get ahold of these." And we ended up talking with Butterfield Construction out of McPherson. They were actually working in Market at the time. They come down and looked at it. We all come to agreement that, "Hey, this is probably what we need to do because it has to be fixed." Because I told her, I said, "When you get ready to sell this house, no one wants to buy a house that has no sewer. We want to fix it and fix it right." So, we went ahead and agreed. I have an estimate here from Butterfield and what they thought it would take to fix it. And so, they finally come in. This was in May. They didn't get to work on it until July because of everything that's happened and everything else. And so, she luckily lives next door to her mother, so she could go next door for sewer and all this other. You know, she was still able to stay in the house, but only because of location. But anyway, Butterfield come in, opened it all up, and city was there. The city removed the bricks. And they were all working together. I wasn't physically there all the time. I'm retired now, so I could have been, but I didn't think it was necessary because I thought we were all working together at this. Well, come to find out, when they got the street opened up, this was the root that had ruined the sewer and was actually in part of the main. This is actually a piece. They sawed off. And I asked them if I could keep it because that's a very expensive root. Well, there is a big tree on the west side of the street. Our houses are on the east side. So, it's understandable. After 60 years, this house is 60-some years old. This was the problem. And they found out that the root had broken the sewer line and part of the main. And so, it had to all be pulled apart and fixed. Well, when they seen all this, Denny, I think is his name, is that our director or whatever over here, he come out and they talked to him about what to do. And he told Butterfield, "Go ahead and fix what needs to be fixed. Fix the main, do whatever." So, they did. Come to find out, there was some situations that no one anticipated because evidently 60 years ago, they let whoever put the line in for the house then, instead of coming over the main and dropping into the main, they came into the side of the main, which no one knew anything about, even the city didn't know. But anyway, everything was taken care of, fixed, and everything was put back together. And I'm assuming the city gave them the okay to backfill it and do everything because they were working with the city. Butterfield has done it all along. Okay, well, it all got fixed. And I'm very happy with Butterfield. They did an excellent job. Everything was fixed. Everything's done. I would have lowered up by the house a little more, but I can do that myself. Anyway, I thought we were all working together. Okay, Butterfield sends me the bill. And the bill is real close to the estimate, except there's an extra $1,200 added on for fixing the main. And so, I went and asked him. I said, "Is this really a part of..." Well, he said, "I have to add that on because we fixed the main." I said, "You didn't ask me to fix the main. I know it had to be fixed." But I said, "Did you ask..." "Yeah, they said to go ahead and fix it." I said, "Okay." Well, I said, "Shouldn't the city be responsible for..." Because I think their part of it was $1,200. Mine was almost $13,000. And so, I went back to Butterfield. He circled everything on the bill that he thought was probably the city's responsibility because it wasn't our line. It was the main. It was the cost for fixing the main. So, then I brought it to the city. And Denny told me, "They're not going to do a thing for it. I have to pay it." Well, I've already paid Butterfield because I'm a contractor. I know when I get the work done, I like to be paid. So, I wrote him a check for the whole nine yards because I said, "It's not your fight. You did a good job. It's fixed." But I said, "Don't you feel like the city should pay a portion of this because it's for the city's main?" No one knew it had to be fixed when we opened it up. We did it the way the city wanted to do it. I think I could have did it cheaper. But again, I thought we were all working together. Anyway, so I talked with Denny. Got nowhere there. I've been up and talked with Tanner and presented the same things to him and said, "I'm sorry. I feel like the city should be a portion of this because they're the ones that wanted this done this way. And it's their main. It's not mine." Because honestly, it's fixed the exact same way they found it when they opened it. Our line still comes into the side. It does not come into the top of the main. And again, the city allowed him to do it, which is okay because it's their responsibility. I understand that. 60 years ago, I'm sure they had the same kind of inspector out there and said, "Yes, this is what you have to do." But what I'm here to say is why is the city not helping me by reimbursing me the $1,200 that was that cost? I have the bill right here, the estimate right here. And I've been told by the city, "We're not going to do a thing. It's all on you." Well, I'm sorry. If it is all on me, the rest of you in town, I feel sorry for you. Because if anything happens to you, they're going to leave you home just like me. I don't feel like this is the type that needs to be done around here. I've been a part of Linsburg for a lot of years. I went to school here and everything else. I always thought we could all work together and come up with a logical connection. If I'm paying $13,000, they can't pay $1,200 because we fixed it the way they wanted it fixed. The way Tom and I wanted to do it, we just wanted to dig it out ourselves. But they didn't want us to dig in the street. I think we could have done that for a third of the cost. Because that's the only problem. I've got film right here showing that the rest of my sewer line was okay. But now, it's a new sewer line third of the house. And I said, "If you're going to bore it, put it all in new, then we know we don't have a problem." Because the old clay tile after 60 years, you know what happens to it. Now, it's a plastic line. But that's why I wanted to come down and express my concerns to you. Because I've been told by Tanner and Denny, "No, we're not going to help you in any way, shape, or form." And I told them, I said, "Well, are you leaving it up to me to sue the city?" Because I'm sorry. I didn't improve for them to fix the main, but I knew they had to. And I don't want to go into all that. I still don't understand why we can't all work together. But if it takes that, I've been to court before. And I told Tanner that I didn't agree with what he said. They made the decision. But I asked him if it's okay if I come in and express my concerns to all of you. That's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. We appreciate you. And of course, you're always welcome as any citizen is to come and express your concern. Thank you. Thank you for that. Tanner, we have Mr. Erickson's bills and his phone number and contact information.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We will well review that and call you, okay?
Okay, well, that's...
Thank you.
I just wanted the rest of the people in Linsburg to know that, hey, we've got a government that works with us, not just says, "Well, you've got to do it this way, but it's all on you."
Sure. And sewer lines, every once in a while, this question comes up. And I, you know, we appreciate you taking time to come here. And we heard you. And thank you so much for being here.
Okay.
And we'll be in touch. Thanks so much.
Yeah, not a problem. Just wanted to bring you my $12,000 piece of root.
That's just part of it, isn't it?
But yeah, this is what they sawed off. But Denny told me that Butterfield broke the main to fix mine. And I said, "What broke the main is right here. When they come in to fix it, it was already in trouble because the whole thing was broken up because of the root." I wasn't there to film it, so I can't prove anything. But this is what I was told. And on the bill, Mr. Butterfield, Chuck Butterfield, circled it and agreed with me that they had to fix the main because of the root.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else that has signed up to speak this evening, we'll turn our attention to amendments to the agenda. I don't believe we have any amendments this evening, sir. Thank you. Item number five, the mayor's report. And a couple things. First of all, the car show, if you took advantage of that, beautiful weather at Swinson Memorial Park. And there were 187 cars, which I think is a record. And somehow, logistically, they got everybody in and everybody out safely. And what a, it was a great event. The weather was perfect. So, enjoyed that. I wanted to point out that there is a month-long exhibition of Mr. John Whitfield's artwork at the Smoky Valley Arts and Folk Life Center, 114.5 South Main. That's all month. So, if you get an opportunity to go see that retrospective of his work, please do. Marcia Howe let me in there today, even though they're not open. And it's quite an exhibit. I really, really enjoy it. And suggest that you pop in and see that. Council, I also wanted to point out that we were going to have a budget meeting. Had a little trouble finding a date where majority of us could be. And I think that in the interest of scheduling, what we'll do is have a budget meeting as a study session on the 18th, so two weeks from this evening at 5:30. And that way, it's on an evening that we're already scheduled to be here. And so, we'll see how that works. So, on the 18th, we'll send out a reminder for you. With that, we'll turn our attention to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are routine and enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless a council member so requests. There are three items this evening. Item A is the approval of amendments for the regular meeting July 21st, 2025. Item B, which is payroll ordinance number 5546. Item C, purchase order ordinance number 5547. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we will ask David to please do a roll call vote this evening.
Councilmember Presley?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Federer?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Swinson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Thank you, David. Item number seven, appointments. I'll ask our city administrator. Do we have appointments this evening?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item number eight, which is committee and staff reports. I will recognize Milton Collins, our community development director, who's going to bring us up to date on a community cleanup.
Evening, council. Good evening, mayor. I just want to give you a quick update. On August the 9th, from 8:00 to noon this weekend, on Saturday, we have another community cleanup day. This is our fourth one since I've been a part of the city. And it's each time, it gets bigger and better. More people continue to come out. I have just kind of a flyer if you want to pass it around. It's a map on the back. I don't have enough for everybody, but I can get you one if you need one. Like I said, from 8:00 to noon, the street department stays out and helps me with the loader, get everything in the dumpster. Mass use had some good comments from us doing this. So, it's all been a good contribut- contribution to the community and not having people drive out to 17th Avenue of the county to just go right to the street department. So, are there any questions or anything?
Are there questions for Milton?
It's the best day of the year, so I think we'll do a great deal.
I don't know. I think the next one again is the best day of the year, the 16th.
Nope.
It's my birthday. The 16th?
No. See, mine and my daughter's the 16th, so that's the best one.
So, we can find out later.
That's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Milton. And that is your anniversary? On the 16th, okay. Well, there you go. We have these. Milton, we appreciate your hard work on that community cleanup day and being the Hillings Fest year. I asked him this morning. I said, "Are you..." It's a sensitive Hillings Fest. I said, "Maybe could we, you know, like you do with your kids, require everybody to run five items?" Okay, so we are item B of committee and staff reports. Our city administrator has an update or a discussion on EMS sales tax.
Good afternoon, council. Just wanted to fill you in. The police chief and I went to a meeting last week in McPherson regarding a countywide sales tax that's being discussed to help support EMS services in cities in McPherson County as well as fire protection districts. Was hoping to have more information to present tonight, but at this time, do not. So, just wanted to put this on the radar as a future discussion that we will be having. But at this time, I don't have much share on that one person. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Tanner. Other questions? Okay, thank you, Tanner.
Thank you.
Turn your attention to item number nine, old business. Do we have any old business this evening? Item 10, new business. We have three items this evening. We will begin with item A, golf course sprinkler. And I will recognize Lauren Dope, our recreation director. Welcome, Lauren.
Thank you. Good evening, council. The Linsburg Golf Course is looking to add a handful of sprinkler heads as well as address a couple wiring issues in current zones of the golf course. This is basically due to growth of play in our golf course. Mark Roslin has been able to add some additional tee boxes. As you all know, it's a nine-hole golf course, but if you play the front nine, there are different tee boxes on the back nine for a few holes. So, that's just been a great addition to the course. But these additions don't have sprinklers tied into them. So, these additions would help alleviate staff having to manually pour hand water in those areas. So, tonight, I'm looking for a motion to contract with Tall Grass Turf Solutions in the amount of $5,775 for sprinkler system work.
Thank you, Lauren. Other questions for Lauren? Councilmember Peterson?
Just a quick one. Over the years, there've been different strategies or thoughts about whether we water fairways or don't water fairways, or plant certain type of grass or don't plant certain types of grass. Do we have a master plan for the goals of how we progress out there with sprinklers or grass types? Or is that all completed? It's been a while since we talked about that.
Sure. So, we do contract with someone right now. And Mark Roslin would happily come up and talk about this a little bit more about a plan. Happily. Is that putting words on his mouth?
It doesn't.
But we contract with someone now who helps.
Could you come up and introduce yourself?
I'm Mark Roslin. I've been out there volunteering, kind of whatever, the golf course, working out there for the last five years. I worked with a guy named Brian Welsh. He's the superintendent for Heston Golf Course currently. Back when Christie originally came here and Beth was here, they hooked me up with him when he was at the McPherson Country Club. And, you know, we'd just, we'd just been kind of starting small and working away. First year out there, we fixed over like 40 heads out there out of 54 zones. We've continually repair, repair, repair. And as far as the grass types and stuff, when Christie came here, she was, she was wanting us to look into Zoysia grass. A lot of courses use Zoysia. Heston uses Zoysia and stuff. And so, Brian brought a guy from down in Halsted over. And we're talking to him about it. And the plan was to not go Zoysia because we've got Bermuda grass. And the Bermuda grass is just as good as Zoysia. It doesn't handle the winter as much, but it hasn't been a problem for us very, very much so far. But the idea was it would just be wasted money trying to tear up what we have to come in with some new grass and take over. But the Bermuda's just going to kind of overtake it anyway at some point. So, with that being said, at some point, Linsburg's going to have to look at replacing their irrigation system out there. It's, no one seems to know how old the system is. It's a variety of pipes, thin walls. It's all different sizes. It's, it's, in my opinion, it's a ticking time bomb at some point that the city's going to have to. If they want to be in the golf business, they're going to have to address that. And at that point, when they do address that, if they wanted to switch grasses and stuff like that, then that would be the time to formalize that plan. But if you haven't been out there playing golf anytime or anytime in the last year, I would suggest coming on out because then, especially this last year, especially this last weekend, I've had people coming up to me who've played golf their whole life and have said that this is the best this course has ever been in. So, done.
Questions?
Well, do we contract with this individual from Heston?
Yeah.
I didn't, I knew that one time he was, and that was when he was still at McPherson, but I didn't realize if we're still contracting with him and that's something we do.
We pay him an annual fee.
He gets an annual fee. I call him the chef and I'm the sous chef. So, I call him, ask him questions. He answers my questions. If I, if I need him, he'll come down and do whatever if we can't just discuss it over the phone. Or he comes around periodically and we'll just drive around. Yeah.
And so, help me out here a little bit. The tee boxes that, and I know there's some alternate tee boxes that don't have sprinkler now or mostly ones that have been added or created.
They've just been, been created. As we've improved the course, when I kind of took over out there, all the tee boxes were fairly small. And like she said, there's a front nine, which is the whites, and a back nine, which is the blues. And all the tee boxes are relatively small. And they share the box with, with the seniors. So, like on the white box, there was a red box. Well, with the increased play out there, I couldn't keep up repairing the tee boxes. So, I just moved to make an alternate tee boxes to kind of move some of that traffic off of there. Because I can only make them so big before I'm, you know, it's not really a tee box anymore. So, we've just created alternate tee boxes. And we've moved seniors and ladies up closer to, to give them the true benefit or as they should versus always hitting where the guys are hitting. Because that's ultimately what they're doing. They just threw a set of donkeys up five feet away from the guys and said, "You're good to go." Now, they're 100 yards up, they're 50 yards up, just depending on the hole. And it's, I mean, the tee boxes, we've expanded. Out of the nine holes, we've expanded eight. We've got eight new tee boxes out there and we've grown them. I mean, some are bigger than the greens, so, which is awesome.
Further questions?
Yes. What's the age of seniors now? That's what I would be.
Depends on the group out there. Sometimes men's night at 60, some tournaments at 65. Yeah. But I will tell you that the alternate tee boxes that I've added were that, like on two, you're from over two, where it's clear up on the corner. Mine's seven. That's become very popular, especially with ladies and seniors. Because I mean, it's a fair stretch. You can get to the fairway. And same with five. It's quite a stretch to get over to the fairway on five. You know, they've been very popular. Just by adding the other tee boxes, it's taken the traffic off of the other ones. And the health of them is night and day. So...
So, one last question then. So, if we were to do this on these tee boxes and then, let's say, catastrophe happens, would we be able to utilize what we're doing now with a new system? Or would we have to redo this again if this were, if that were to...
This is just piggybacking on to what we have now and adding some heads out there. I'm assuming that when, when you go down that avenue of the new system, you bring, you bring in a sprinkler engineer first. I've talked to a guy in Kansas City before about, you know, just, you know, what's that process like and things. And it's, I mean, it's a few thousand dollars just to have him come in and say, "This is what should happen here." But I'm assuming that you would just walk away from the system you have and you're going to put in a new system. Turkey Creek could be a prime example of that. They, they have a system in the ground, but they just, when they put the new system in, it just, nothing to do with this one. And that's actually probably the biggest problem we have out there now. Is there two or three systems in out there? And they've tied things to this system or that system. And I've had problems here and there. And it's old systems and it's leaking, but it's not actually tied to my system. So, how's it getting water?
So, probably not.
Yeah, I would, you would start, you'd be money ahead just to walk away from it and just go. And which is they've done in the past too. Because I've found heads out there in the ground that aren't tucked to anything. So...
Would it be further ahead to put $5,000 toward getting this sprinkler engineer out?
Right now, I'd say no.
No.
I would say that's something you just need to look at. That was when we talked about the $50,000 for the sprinkler system. That was something we talked about using in that was to bring him in. But right now, with the increased play and everything, this would probably be the most beneficial... But right now, with the increased play and everything, this would probably be the most beneficial piece of that money so we can actually have water on those tee boxes, because we've got lots of play out there. And I can't, I can't manually get water everywhere. Sure. So we've been lucky this year that it's been wet, so. So that's been nice for me.
Further questions? Seeing no further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Paul. Counsel, the recommendation is for a motion to contract with Tall Grass Turf Solutions in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for sprinkler system work. Is there a motion? Salute.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we'll ask David once again to do a roll call vote. Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
Hebel?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Vanderly?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes. Thank you, David. And we will now turn our attention to item B, which is the Smoky Valley Arts and Folk Life Center two thousand and twenty-five events, resolution zero-seven dash two-zero-two-five. And we'll recognize once again David Haye, our finance director, who is substituting this evening for Roxy.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, counsel. So the Smoky Valley Arts and Folk Life Center submitted a notification of nonprofit organization event promoting the arts application, ABC Form eight-six-five, to be able to serve complimentary alcoholic liquor and cereal malt beverages at their wine and wreaths event on August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, from six-thirty to eight-thirty. As a nonprofit, the Smoky Valley Arts and Folk Life Center can sponsoring event promoting the arts and serve complimentary alcoholic liquor and cereal malt beverages to members of the public during the event if it is approved by the local governing body by ordinance or resolution and submitted to the Kansas alcohol beverage control at least ten days prior to the event. So we have a recommended motion of, a motion to approve the Smoky Valley Arts and Folk Life Center notification of nonprofit organization event promoting the arts form and passed resolution number zero-seven dash twenty-twenty-five, authorizing the serving of complimentary alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverage at their wine and wreaths event on August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, David. Other questions for David? He's hoping there's not.
There's none.
Thank you, David. Counsel, you heard the recommendation for a motion to approve the Smoky Valley Arts and Folk Life Center notification of nonprofit organization event promoting the arts form and passed resolution number zero-seven dash two-zero-two-five, authorizing the serving of complimentary alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverage at their wine and wreaths event on August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there a motion?
Salute.
I'll second.
Okay. I move to second.
Motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we'll ask David to please do a roll call vote. Councilmember Corwin?
Yes.
Vanderly?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Hebel?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes. Thank you, David. Now turn our attention to item C, flock cameras. And I will recognize Chief Terry Reed, our director of public safety. Welcome, chief.
Good evening, counsel. Mayor. I come today to actually bring an invoice to, two invoices to you for approval. The one is our subscription for flock cameras for the second year. We added cameras in two thousand twenty-four, and so we have an invoice that was approved in two thousand twenty-four for six thousand dollars for the second year subscription for the two cameras. And then we budgeted for a third camera to be added this year, and that was budgeted at four thousand dollars, and it came in at three thousand six hundred and fifty is what it's going to cost to have that camera installed. So the total was budgeted ten thousand dollars, and it's nine thousand six hundred and fifty with the two invoices for the addition of the third camera and paying for the subscription of the two cameras we already have.
Thank you, chief. Other questions for our chief of police?
I just wondered how that worked. Has it done what you guys thought it would do?
It is very useful investigation. So if we have a description of a vehicle, or a tag, or a partial tag that is given to us, then we can run it through those cameras, and we can locate vehicles. One of the ones that I, I kind of surprised me is we had a hit-and-run accident up by the college where a car backed into another car, and it left a piece of its back bumper there, which, it was a BMW, I believe. And so the park identified it as a BMW. These cameras actually tie into our car cameras, so we can search in these flock system our car cameras when they're driving around, because they also scan the license plates while we're driving around. So we were able to know that a truck, or one of our patrol vehicles went through there that morning. And so we were able to look back and see what the tag was on that BMW vehicle that was parked across from that and identify the vehicle from that. And then we actually then saw that that vehicle was down in Texas, and there was a picture of it on the camera down there in Texas, missing the piece off of the bumper that was left here. So it's, it's a very good investigative tool. And we do also get hits for warrants. If they come through and there's warrants, or if we would, you know, happen to get an amber alert, our officers would get notifications to our phones and to our computers in the car if those would come through.
So it's done what you wanted it to?
Yes.
Counselmember Swenson?
Has it done anything you haven't wanted it to? I remember being some discussion of the potential for officers to use the system to attract people.
No, we use it mostly, almost entirely as an investigative tool after the fact by searching license plates or vehicle descriptions from crimes that have occurred. It doesn't notice bias of traffic violate, or traffic stuff. We don't have anything turned on. The only thing that it's would notify us of is if there's something that's entered into NCIC, stolen vehicle, you know, amber alert, gray, silver alert, any, any of those.
Sure.
It notifies us, but we don't have it notify us of anything else of that, so.
Right. I think one of the selling points was that there was a flagging system for any officers who were searching for license plates erroneously.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, good to hear. Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing no further questions. Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
For the great job that you are doing as our chief of police. Counsel, the recommendation is to approve the initial two-year subscription to flock safety for installation of a third fixed ALPR camera in the amount of three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, and to pay the second year subscription for the two ALPR cameras installed in two thousand twenty-four in the amount of six thousand dollars. Is there a motion? Salute.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and a questions on the motion. Seeing no questions, we'll ask David to once a call, once again, make a roll call vote. Councilmember Presley?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Hebel?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Vanderly?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, David. Next, our turn our attention to executive sessions. Don't believe we have a reason for an executive session this evening. Item number twelve, is there other business to come before us this evening?
Just one quick clarification. The meeting that you mentioned, that was the one that was going to be on the eleventh?
Yes.
It's going to be moving today.
Yes. Thank you. At five thirty. Yes, at five thirty.
Here.
Yes.
And there will be food, so.
Well, I wasn't going to tell you.
Yes, thank, thank you.
Seeing no further business to come before us, I will adjourn motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Always no. We are...